Full attachments and any past information that we discussed because otherwise we're going back and looking for it and it should be available to the public and if they're going to look for it digitally, they should be able to look for it in one place.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. I'd like to have anyone from the public would like to address the board. Please state your name and address for the record. You're going to approach your podium and, yep, please, by all means. If I have the purview with, let's try and keep it three to four minutes, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, I'm sure of it. My name's John Ersek, E-R-S-E-K. I live at 29 Valley View Drive. And I just had a question, several questions regarding the, the planning for the golf course development as far as the, the water, the drinking water that will be used there, also the sewage disposal. First of all, as far as the water, is the, 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 the planning for the, the, the water for all these people and the commercial buildings, is, is this industry or municipal standard or is it unusual? And also in terms of the sewage planning, my understanding is that it's all the sewage from the residential units and the commercial units, once it's all built out, will be all pumped upstream uphill, you might say, to the center of town where it will connect with the, the public sewage for processing. And, and my question about that, for instance, to the town engineer is, is that unusual? Is, is that the best solution for that? Or was some kind of mini sewage plant down there by, at, actually near the, the former country club in the, in the middle of the development, would that be, would that be better? And then if, then one other question is what plans are being made in terms of traffic? Is there, are there plans to have a, a traffic light on, on Brackett Road at, at the one end of McClellan or at, at, at the other end on 114? Have they had started having discussions with the state about installing traffic signals? Thank you.
Thank you. It's a pleasure of the board. Can we have Mr. Norton respond to that or do we want to wait? Sorry to put you on the spot.
Chair, I'd like to wait for all the public.
Okay.
Because there may be other questions and that might all relate.
Sure thing. You, you got to reprise for now. Thank you.
And the, also the applicant, I'm assuming, will make us, will also give us an update so that may address some of the questions.
Sure. Thank you, Colonel. Anyone else?
So my name is Craig Pye and I live on Shirley Lane, just on the backside of McClellan Road. And my biggest concerns are, one, traffic patterns. If you live in that area or know that area at all, between eight and 10 o'clock, either on the 114 side or the Brackett Road side, is very congested and adding over 800 units to that area is going to make traffic even more congested. Also, big concerns of mine as a father of four, the influx of more children in our public schools, seating for those children. I know that there's been several issues with the schools needing more money over the last few years. Seems like every time I come to a voting booth that they're asking for more money. So wondering if there's going to be anything done about that. And also my other concern is, you know, being a resident in that area for the last 35 years, I am an active outdoor enthusiast. I hunt, fish, use that, use the land of our state but have been unable to hunt or fish my property as we live on a game preserve. So it seems kind of contradicting to me to be able to put in another 800 some odd units on that property. There's, I don't know how many acres of solar panels that have been put in that property out there. And I've also heard talks of another 200 plus units going the opposite direction towards New Portland Road. So, yeah, those are my concerns and would like to have those addressed. Are we going to be able to use our land if we're allowing another 800 plus units to be built on that property? Am I going to be able to hunt out there at some point? I mean, we're completely decimating the game preserve. So I wonder if that's anybody's concern. Also heard about reading your packet, different trails that are being put in out there for use. As a kid growing up in that area, we always used the golf course as stated in here as sledding hill. So are there going to be properties like that, areas out there for me to bring my kids to, to go sledding? Or is this just another landmark in the town for development? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pye. Anyone else? Just please.
My name is Pam Milliken Garza. I live at 26 McClellan Road. And sadly, I'm a little late to the game, I guess, because I think most of us in the neighborhood never thought that this would be a real concern, that this would ever come to fruition. And here we are. I echo the concerns of the prior two gentlemen about not just traffic, but infrastructure in general. I mean, you're talking about, forget a traffic light, we had a way bigger problem with a traffic light. If you're talking about dumping 1,600 more cars onto McClellan Road and Brackett Road every day, because you've got to assume each of 800 housing units is going to have a couple of cars. I can't even begin to conceptualize what you're going to do about that. But I hope that we're going to put that work ahead of building all of these housing units. So, and beyond that infrastructure concern about traffic, I don't know how Gorham can continue to absorb this residential growth, period. Like, you know, try to go to, I'm just going to use the silly example, but try to go to Gorham House of Pizza now and get a parking spot. Forget it. Where, where are these going to go? Where are we going to go grocery shopping? Because Hannaford's not going to accommodate all of that. And maybe over time, we have a second grocery store and, you know, we build other infrastructure. But it just seems like there's a lot of work that needs to be done before we start doing this residential building. So way beyond a traffic light. Another question that I have, concern that I have, I think that William Clark of Westbrook probably is rolling over in his grave daily when he looks at what happened to his beautiful farm on Spring Street. And I'm concerned, is that, I'm, I'm sorry, is that the vision for Gorham? Are we like the next Westbrook? Because I don't know that many of us would choose to live in Westbrook over Gorham. That development on Spring Street in Westbrook is a terrible eyesore. I think most people would agree. And I hope that is not the vision for the golf course. The wildlife preserve, it's not really, I don't know who commented on that, it's not a preserve, it's a sanctuary. So there is no protection from building. I asked that question a long time ago. I personally would not want that to change. I hope it stays a wildlife sanctuary. I'm hoping that we can still accommodate the deer and the turkeys and all the other critters that we see, all the other wildlife that we see in the neighborhood. I know my daughter is horribly distressed about what's going to happen to all the wildlife. And also someone made a comment about the sledding hill. My children and I have logged a lot of hours on that hill. And I think it would be an incredible gesture of goodwill if somehow we could preserve the sledding hill for the public. So those are my comments.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, anyone like to approach and talk, give us some ideas, feedback. It's a public hearing. Anyone else, please, going once. You had your chart. No, 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 no. We, we have to see if there's anyone else. Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Pye, I'll give you a second.
I guess my other concern was to with, if the project is going to proceed and it's becoming a reality for the town, is there any way to gear toward any of the contracting towards local contractors like myself, small time guys? Because I know a lot of these huge projects end up going to the, the larger guys, you know, like Ace Painting. I'm a small two-man crew and it's hard for me to gain contracts like these because I get smoked by these multi-million dollar facets that I have, I have no chance of even competing with any of those guys. So if there's any way to get in the language that, you know, these contracts go to, you know, the smaller entities like myself, that would be a plus for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, again, anyone else would like to address this on a public hearing? Going once? Going twice? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. The public hearing is now closed. Would you like to hear from the developer? We're looking for any updates, as Mr. Poria mentioned.
Hi, my name, excuse me, my name is Dan Riley. I'm with Sombago Technics, we're the site engineers for the project. And with me is Nick Troyano from the applicant that can answer any questions. Is there any particular I can go through and address those questions or if the board had any specific concerns you wanted me to, to walk into? I'll say as a start, I do have with me the information that was presented at the last meeting, if the board wants to hear that again. We haven't made any revisions to the plans themselves or, you know, the overall concept for what the project is. The only changes or, or different items from the last time we met are that Tom spelled out regarding the language in the, in the contract zone that's been developed further with the staff and the city attorney to respond to your, your comment and to try to finalize the language before it goes to the council. But I'm happy to discuss any of it. Certainly understand the questions from the, the public regarding the process and traffic and site plan related issues, utility related issues. I guess I would just start that by saying that this is the first step in the process that it has to go through with the town. What we're asking for tonight from the board is a recommendation on the language of this contract zone to be forward to the council for its deliberation. And what that essentially does is codifies the uses that are allowed in the project. Following that, there is still the whole process through the planning department for the actual site plan review for the development of the project that addresses all of the items that are brought up, as they do for any other project in the town, that were brought up and that are part of the, any development. The traffic permitting, that's a process that is, will require a state permit. Those permits are applied for at the time we come back to the planning board, either for a master plan approval or a site plan approval. So all of that coordination and work with the state evaluating the existing traffic conditions and what this project would add to it. It's a very well-defined state process and we will certainly require that traffic movement permit that will address the impacts of the project and any mitigation that has to be done off-site as part of that. That's, none of what we're talking about tonight changes any of that. Regarding the question about sewer and water, as we discussed with the board and with the council previously, the reason the applicant is seeking a contract zone is to ensure that the project is going to be viable and be able to extend water and sewer to this area, public water and sewer to this area, so that this development and any other development that occurs and existing properties that exist along the route of those improvements have access to fully public water and sewer. That's sort of the premise and the purpose of the contract zone is to, to allow that to happen. This area of Gorham has been identified in the comprehensive plan as a designated growth area. The zoning in the South Gorham Crossroads District was specifically written for the purpose of mixed use and higher density residential development with the goal of focusing that development in areas of the community that can, that are designated through the public process to focus that growth so it doesn't occur willy-nilly or sprawling across the community. And the main impediment that has, over time, to fulfilling what the council and the public created in terms of the contract zone and the development, the goals and objectives of this area, has been the lack of water and sewer. And as part of the contract zone, the contractors agreeing to extend sewer service to the sites over 11,000 feet away, extend water to the site, which is between 5,000 and 7,000 feet away, that benefits both certainly the project but also benefits the community in terms of expanding public water and sewer to areas that are unsued. So that's sort of, I think, a summary of where we are with that, but I'd be happy to follow up with any specifics that the board might have.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Colonel, please. There were also a couple of questions about open space and specifically the sledding hill and so forth. And I know you addressed that in the, in your, your presentation at the last meeting.
Yeah, correct. I'm sorry, I left that off. Yeah, so at our meeting with the planning board last time, when we reviewed the concept plans, there are certainly areas of the site that the applicant intends to remain open space and undeveloped areas. It's a beautiful piece of property. There are some steep slopes that the community has enjoyed on private property that, that the community has enjoyed for years. Part of the provisions that Tom introduced in his introduction that's been added to this agreement at the request of the planning board our last meeting was that the open space that will be ultimately developed on the project site through the review process would be available for the town to accept as public open space. It's been the applicant's assertion in our, in our discussions with the council and with the planning board, that the open space parcels that are going to be created and planned as part of this would remain available to the public for use as they have traditionally been used for sledding and recreation. As we talked to the planning board, when we come back after this contract, the zoning process with a master plan in the layout that we've described, we've agreed and intend to provide parking spaces in the roadways that are constructed specifically for the public to be able to access some of that open space. The project intends to dedicate at least 20 acres of actual conservation land on the project site focused around the areas of the Stroudwater River that would be dedicated conservation space with no development. That includes bridges over the river that exist as part of the golf course development that would all be accessible, either reusing the existing golf course trails that are available on the site, along with new paths and open space trails that are going to be created as part of the master plan. And those are all intended to be publicly available for people to access the open space in the project.
Any other members of the board?
Excuse me. Mr. Chairman.
Please.
If I may. Dan, good summary, but could you just maybe address the question on, that was raised about the sewer, pumping the sewer?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, so I don't know if Tom wanted to take that. But yes, it's not unusual or for, when sewer is extended to a site like this, to require some gravity sewer and some pump sewers. The low, closest location for sewer in Gorham is about 11,000 feet away on the site running up Brackett Street. The town has received some funding from a, I believe, a congressional earmark and is in the process of issuing a request for proposals from engineering firms to further study the specifics of how to best extend sewer to this area of Gorham. That RFP, I think, has been issued. It's had, there were some clarifications that should be hopefully awarded at some point. But it is typical to have a collection system that, that can be pumped. It's not certain from this project whether that would involve one pump station or two, but that's typically a, generally a more preferable option than creating a new treatment facility, whether it's publicly or privately owned, at the area of the site to treat a small area. This would take advantage or the plan as it's envisioned would extend the existing public sewer system to this area. And then it would connect and convey the existing public sewer system to this area, and then it would connect and convey the, any sewage developed from this project or anything else in the new service area that's created within the public system to the treatment plant where the rest of Gorham's sewage is conveyed and treated.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any members of the board? We may call you back, Mr. Riley, if you don't mind.
Certainly.
Thank you. Members of the board, we want to go through this, this document. I have a couple of things, but please. Walsh?
Yes, the language added for the growth permits. You know, that's, and that was added by the developer, if I, if I understand the color code correctly.
Referring to a particular page?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Page 10 and 13, item C.
Thank you.
It's in blue text.
Yep, thank you.
Text. And that was added by the developer, correct?
Correct.
And we're good with it? And Tom is good with that?
Yeah, so I think it was the developer's concern. We identified for them what we, we consider a mixed-use development moving forward. I think the developer, you're going to call him up, but had concerns that if should staff turn over or elected officials turn over, they wanted to make it clear that they're being exempted from growth permits instead of a determination by staff.
So the 64, or 8% of single-family homes, they are exempt from, from the growth ordinance?
Correct.
That's a big advantage here. Real big advantage.
Just, just to add on to that, I mean, I was going to ask, I know that doesn't affect this contract zone because this is what is written, written into our, into our current code, if I understand, so they're just clarifying that so it doesn't get changed in the future. I understand that.
Right, yeah, I understand. I'm just pointing out the fact, it's a big advantage.
Like, I'm not sure that this is something that the town wants to continue to do, because we don't have an option to accept it or recommend it. It's just, that's what's in the code, and I know there was a reason why the town did that at, at the time, but I don't know that that, those reasons still exist in the same way, so.
I think it's the council's continued support for mixed-use developments and pushing developers to add a commercial component to their development. So as long as there's willingness for the council to want that kind of development, I don't see that exemption going away from the growth ordinance.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not saying that they would or wouldn't, but I would favor, at least on the planning board, that it would be something that an applicant had to request, and we had the ability to recommend waiving a, a growth ordinance requirement as opposed to it just being a blanket, because what if this was a 5,000 unit construct, I mean, we wouldn't have, again, we still wouldn't have a choice. And again, I'm not, I'm not, I know it's not an issue here, I'm just saying, as a planning board, as a town for policy, I don't think this makes sense just to do a blanket relief from that requirement.
I, I think that's, that's a good point, and I think if the planning board can recommend to the council, considering that, right, if, if the planning board wants language, we can work with you to draft something that we could send on to the council.
That would be my preference. I mean, I'm always one person on the board, but that would be my preference.
Well, Bill, are you, are you in favor of the way, the way it's stated for this project? I mean, in principle, I, I like where you're going, okay? But with regard to this text tonight, are you comfortable with that, or do we want to send something to the council with regard to this project, or just in general that may want to go back and revisit that language for future projects?
I'm just talking in general because I think this is the, this is the, this is how our code is written.
Yep.
And so I think it would be disingenuous to not go back and, you know, require something else and change the rules for somebody that's already submitted a proposal, but it, it raises concern for me about future projects.
Yep, and that's, I would, I would support that if we could request staff to bring this back to us maybe at a future meeting so that we can draft something to the council regarding that. And that's the reason I brought, I was kind of highlighting this tonight, because, you know, if you're a developer coming in here, hey, this is, this is a big, gives you a big advantage. Now, being a contract zone, we need to make sure that the town, you know, you pass, you pass this across the table to the developer, and you make sure you're getting something in return. In this case, the water and sewer to South Gorham is a big advantage to the town, so, you know, there's probably a proper quid pro quo here.
Right, that's why I think it should be an application and a waiver that gets granted, and I think that make, all makes sense. I also wanted to highlight to the town, because I know there's a lot of concern for the town about growth, people in the town about the growth of the town. This is the plan, like, this is the comprehensive plan that the town council passed and the, and the, the, the direction that they, and the area that they wanted the growth to take place in. This is, this is the plan that was passed. So the planning board's job is to make sure that the plan is being followed and to make recommendations if the plan needs to change, but this is the existing plan, the way the town council has voted it. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood.
Sure, sure. Colonel, to your point, the 2016 comprehensive plan, and there'll be another one in a couple more years that have to be revisited and maybe reworded, but it's taken eight years to get to this point. And it's finally, we've had some developers that, that have gone through and have some vision and people want to sell and people want to buy, so thank you for that. Your comment to Mr. Poria is for all future projects.
I would like to look at this as a, I think we should look at this as a planning board and make a recommendation to the town council, and I, Dave, it sounds like you agree with that, but I don't know about the rest of the, the planning board.
So I'm not confused. This is going to stay as it is.
I'm not.
It's a separate, separate, separate recommendation.
Yes.
Sidebar conversation with the town council, sending a message along saying, through Mr. Poria, you'll be a...
Yeah, so what staff will do is set up a workshop item before one of your meetings and have some draft language you can look at.
Does that work for everyone?
Perfect.
Would that be an ordinance committee meeting?
No, I would do a, a full workshop with the full board, just so everyone can take a look at the language before you decide what committee you want to send it to.
It, it, but it will not affect this?
No.
Anyone else? Any other comments, questions about the contract zone as it's been presented to us?
Mr. Chair, if I could ask that, also on page 10 of 13, D3, if someone could explain that one to me. Help me understand that statement. It says at the bottom of the page, it talks about the connection of public sewer and how that will work.
Yeah, it just talks that, just so it's clear, that sewer-water extension to the development happens in phase one.
Very good.
As part of this whole development, that part is required to be part of phase one.
Okay, thank you. And so when it talks about one family, two family, the, the last line at the bottom of the page, two family or related infrastructure, we're talking about, you know, things like streets and things.
Correct.
All right. Okay, I just have, just in reading that, it got me thinking a little bit more of, okay, the water and sewer is put in here, phase one, it services this project. What is the mechanism that other, the public outside of this, the golf course community can tap into this new infrastructure?
So it's going to be designed, approved, and taken over by the Portland Water District, so it'll be like any other public infrastructure, and then that recapture cost to the developer will happen under the PUC guidance of when they get recouped, when developers tie in or people tie in, so they're...
Okay, so they, they build it, and then PWD takes it over.
Correct.
And it becomes, at that point, it's a public utility, so if someone is building on another section of McClellan or elsewhere, they can tap off of this.
Correct. It will be designed through review of the Portland Water District as it goes through site plan and subdivision review.
Okay, so that, there's nothing further that needs to be in this document to protect those rights?
No.
Okay. Just want to make sure that that's very clear. Yes, Jim?
No, I'm, the wheels are spinning.
Good.
I'm thinking of other projects, but...
Yeah, so what?
I'd just like a little clarification, please, on page 10, if you don't mind, ladies and gentlemen, on D2. I don't quite understand the editing. It says, "The planning board is expressly authorized to waive conformance with one or more..." I can't figure out what's going on there. The, the T appears to be underlined as part of the previous change, and then the capital T, so is that supposed to be a small T?
Correct.
"The planning board is expressly authorized to waive conformance with one or more..."
Yeah.
"...the block..." The English ain't, ain't working for me.
I would say one or more of the blocks, I think, perimeter performance, and I think "of" is missing.
Barocial school, it doesn't work. I have to, it's got to be right.
That's a recommendation by the town attorney, so.
I, I, I don't believe, I don't trust, they didn't go to public school. They, they went to public school.
So I think if the board has a, the planning board is versing up the rest of wave conformance.
And Jim, I interpreted that...
Please, Mr. Burrows.
I also interpreted that to mean "of," so if you put "of" in, it makes sense.
Would you please, please say it for me? Yeah.
"The planning board is expressly authorized to waive conformance with one or more of the block perimeter performance standards in section 1 to 27, D10, et cetera."
Thank you. So we're missing the, is that called an article, the word "of," I believe it's...
Yeah, I was going to say preposition.
Preposition?
Yeah.
There we go. I missed our class.
Public school.
Public school, yeah, yeah. My parents paid for tuition. So that's going to be an edit. Do we, do we all consensus? We're going to add the word "of"? I, I, I have a little, on page 10, again, at the top, under B1 or BI, "One and two-family dwellings shall be constructed on lots with a minimum of 5,000 square feet." That's a postage stamp. That is pretty small. That is really, really, really small. I was wondering how we might have arrived at 5,000.
That was a request of the town council. It, I believe they were 10,000 square feet in the plan, and then the, the council wanted to give them the ability to go down to 5,000.
Okay, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, anything else? Ms. Nichols, please.
Of the concerns that were raised by our public comments, most of them were addressed, but one of the concerns, I think Pam McClellan... ...brought up that I've heard from some other community people, is how we absorb that many people into the town of Gorham and the infrastructure with that. So I'm just wondering if the planning department can kind of just give a little piece of how that all happens. When you put in a big building project like this, it's kind of, it's scary. That's a lot of people. So what do we do with that? What, what is your department doing with that?
I, I think the town in general has to, I think that's why we have a growth ordinance, that's why we're identifying when we get waivers and when we don't, looking at growth. On developments of this size, this is a substantial build-out. This does not happen overnight. This is probably decades to get this, this developed. I mean, we've got site plan we've got to go through, he's got to go to DEP. My guess is it's going to be multiple looks at traffic movement permit. My guess is he'll move forward with a certain phase size, get that approved, start construction, then come back. So this is going to be a process. It just doesn't happen where you build 800 units and it comes online in five years. I just don't foresee that happening. Maybe the developer can talk to her a little bit about his plans and his timing of how, how long he thinks this is going to go, but it's a substantial review.
So I would imagine if, whether the developer or the town, historically, the way towns do this, or how it happens, is that the town kind of grows as the population grows. So as there's a need for a new grocery store, or for roadway system, or for starting to think about school systems, that all happens and is kind of planned as things kind of roll along. I, I know, being in school departments for over 40 years, that they always have a 10-year kind of look and plan out for what population growth looks like, and that's all considered when they're putting their budgets together and looking at, you know, where they're headed. So I imagine the town is pretty much doing the same.
For sure. Just saying, I'm, I'm representing the planning board on the fiscal sustainability committee, and all of that has been reviewed, and the 10-year school population estimates, et cetera, are all, are all being reviewed, and they have all that information, for sure.
Okay. I just think that's good for our community to know.
Yeah, and it's all publicly available, and at the town, like, anybody can have access to that information. It's not secret information, so I would recommend that anybody who's interested to, to access it through the town website.
Thank you. Anyone else regarding the language?
Do you guys want me to go over the layout, or are you guys good with it all? In terms of build-out, timing and all that?
Me personally, I'm good. I, I mean, I, it was my career, I kind of figured stuff out, but please, I don't want to disrespect anyone.
I may, I'd just say, one quick question, just what's, what's your thinking on, on the time for total build-out?
I, I would say it's somewhere between 15 and 18 years. It, it's a, it's a whiz. So, and, and to be honest with you guys, like, the traffic study, we're, I'm going to be living in the development too, at the end of it, so I'm, full intentions of making sure it's perfect. With that being said, too, the 60 houses are probably going to take two years, three years, so that's not going to all happen at once. The reality of it, too, is it's going to be a few developers that come in and put those houses in, so it's going to be less houses in outside areas of Gorham, kind of all getting focused into one spot. So it's not going to be 60 plus another 60 plus another 10 with everybody doing their 10 houses a year. But we're, we're very much focused on getting the traffic pattern for those 60 houses to start and kind of going from there. We're not looking at 800 units. We simply had to do 800 units to know what 8% to be able to get the single-family dwelling units backwards. So we had to do the math backwards. So by no means does anybody look at this and say 800 units, and it's, it's very overwhelming. It's very overwhelming for us as well. We simply had to do it just to set up and see what 8% is. So, and then know backwards what the water and sewer costs are, know that we have to front that money to get it in there, and kind of lay it out like that. So it's, it's all kind of a backwards game instead of working forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Troyano, you, you also have the other project up the hill. Is that going to take precedence because that's already been pushed through?
Yes, so the other project up the hill, let me see if I can use this. See if it works. Okay, perfect. So this is the other project up the hill right here. So that is the 14 units. It's outside of the contract zone, so it is outside of the contract zone. That is actually starting this week. So we'll break ground hopefully this week. Try to keep a light footprint on site for everybody in the town. But, you know, our goal is to kind of keep a clean site while all this is still getting permitted through.
And just for everyone's knowledge, that is going to be private well water and private sewer. That is not going to connect to the system.
The starting point's going to be private water and private sewer. The water probably will tie in. The sewer is going to be more determined based on the residents of those 14 units determining that they are willing to do it. We can't control that, we can't force it, but it is definitely going to be something offered to them.
Which should be included in Portland Water District's calculation. It shouldn't be an, oh, by the way, we forgot, because we were talking about combined units, right?
Oh, cluster.
Cluster, cluster, cluster sub systems, right?
Right. So my opinion would be that that 14 unit subdivision would likely be constructed by the time we're through any review with the Portland Water District, so it certainly would be considered.
Mr. Chairman, if I remember the, the review, the, the plan, the site review, I mean, they, they were building that connection so it could be easily connected at the end of the road. I mean, they had, the, the plan was to, has been to do this all along, and they were going to, they were spending extra money to build that in as an option for a hookup to, to public water and sewer. I bet that's what I remember.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. Mr. Walsh?
On page 11 of 13, the paragraph V in blue, in our copy, it's the, in blue, so I assume that came from the developer. Again, I've read it through. Could I have some help understanding it, please? it, please? It talked about the performance guarantee.
Okay. So, in lieu language on performance guarantee, what that says is basically for any onsite infrastructure work, they don't have to do a performance guarantee until they're ready to sell a lot or pull the building permit. Typically, subdivisions are required to pull, are supposed to submit a performance guarantee prior to us releasing the subdivision plan for review and approval. This one, the applicant asked for that to be carved off, because he's gonna have to do a substantial off-site performance guarantee to get to the site, and the cost to do both was burdensome to them, so we utilized the language that we used to have in our ordinances regarding in lieu language for onsite improvements. He is gonna have to put a performance guarantee for the offsites, but the onsites, until he's ready to sell a lot or pull the building permit, he doesn't do, need to do a performance guarantee.
And the offsite you're referring to, would that be the utility work? Correct, yeah, okay. Thank you.
A question to the planning department itself. Is there, is this time-sensitive? Is, I didn't see anything, maybe it's mixed. They have 10 years to complete this, there is no end date, is there a milestone that they have to reach with different phases, et cetera, or is it just?
No, so, the sewer and water is tied to phase one, so as part of the development of the single-family and two-family lots, they need to have sewer and water designed, approved and constructed as part of that phase. So, as long as they take to do phase one, I guess it's tied to that and wanting COs, because you're not gonna get a CO for a house that's tied to the sewer, so really, that will be the driver of timing.
Sure, thank you. Mr. Walsh.
Yes, I do have just, you know, the language is fine up to that point. I guess when I read it through, and I listen to the public, and I read comments that have come, you know, from social media and all, I guess I'm looking, I feel there's two things missing from the contract zone, and this is why I was asking if language could be added. You know, there's a fear factor we've heard in these concerns, there's a fear of traffic, and the fear of impact on, negative impact on schools. Now, developer has laid out his timeline, which, you know, will lessen those impacts, and I realize that we have to take this thing, each phase has to go through traffic review, but, you know, there's all that process that we know about, that people out there don't know about. Should this, this contract zone contain some language to both of those issues, just stating that it is, you know, something along the line of, with traffic, it is understood that this project will have impacts on traffic, I mean, there's no avoiding that, and that the developer and the town will work in concert to mitigate those. Just something, you know, in the language along that line, and secondly, some language about that the impact on schools will be addressed through continued work between the planning department, school department, and developer, or something along that line. I'm just kinda looking for that language and to put in here somewhere in this agreement, kinda tidy it up.
Thank you.
So, I'll start with the first one, so the first one is regarding traffic, right? He's gonna meet our standards, so because he's not asking from a waiver from any standard, you could put language in there that you're gonna meet it, but he's already gonna meet it, so you're double saying, like, we know you're gonna meet it, but we're double confirming that you're gonna meet traffic. You could add the language, but he's not asking for an exemption from any traffic.
Yeah, and I understand that.
So, that's, I guess you could, but it's not necessary, because he's not asking from, if he was asking for changes for traffic, like pushing things on, then we could look at it and provide some language or some guidance. And then the other part regarding schools and growth, that's a little bit harder, because typically subdivision site plans don't get reviewed under that kind of lens, right? When we look at subdivisions, we don't say, your impact subdivision is X on the school, so you've gotta do X, that's not a function of the planning board's role, so I don't think you, I don't know how you burden the council in the future regarding school capacity growth, I mean, the council's gotta do that anyway, so I don't know how we clearly identify. You get a, council, you get a plan, and school committee, you get a plan for school growth for this development, I think they're already aware of it, and we're working on it.
I would add, I would add something to the school conversation in that there are impact fees to every residential permit issued, the developer has to pay an impact fee in order to offset construction of schools, and so that, and then also, as you've just stated, as the Colonel just stated, every year, the school district reviews what we do here in the planning board, how many things we approve, they take all of that into consideration and figure out the next 10 years out.
And I've just come back to, all that is good, there's an awful lot of people who don't know that, and when they read something like that, again, I just, it does no harm in putting in there, it might just make it easier for the public to accept, that's my point. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Point well taken. I do know both sides of the coin, because I have served on both the school committee and the council, so I'm aware of the statistics, I'm also aware of the public at large that it's not paying attention, especially those folks that don't have children in the district going to the schools, maybe the children are grown and they're prospering someplace, I hope. Anyone else? I guess, Mr. Walsh, I just, to Mr. Poria's point, it's noted for the record, but I don't think we were gonna have something added.
I had to try.
You had to try, you did well. And it is noted, and it's been.
And that's right, I want it on the record, yes, thank you.
Anyone else, anyone else from the board? We have a 10 o'clock rule, so let's move along here, anyone, any comments, questions, suggestions? We have a motion on page 13, I'm not trying to pressure you, but, Mr. Walsh, please.
If the group, if the board is ready for a motion?
I'm looking around, are people ready? Okay, I see thumbs up, thank you.
Move to recommend the town council adopt the contract zone agreement as revised by the planning board this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh, is there a second?
David Burrows, I second it.
Mr. Burrows, thank you. So, we're all set with the language, we've had some things explained to us, some wordsmithing on page 10, we added the word of. I don't believe there were any other typos or anything to that point.
I will add one, that I noticed while I was just looking.
Uh-oh.
On page nine, second paragraph, where it says with a landscaped buffer trip, it should be strip.
It's about the fourth or fifth line down. Attractive roadside appearance with a landscaped buffer strip along the edge of both existing and new. I'm looking for consensus, I believe we'll all be okay with that, since you found it. Anyone else? This is a huge project, huge project, huge project, I think Tom said, you know, five years, that would be 160 units a year, that ain't gonna happen. Maybe 18 years is more like it, perhaps, or how the market goes. All right, all those in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Thank you very much. We ready to keep going? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're at item two, this is a public hearing, contract zone, Aaron Flatt, proposed contract zone to support an agritourism venue at 64 Flagy Meadow Road, zoned urban residential, UR map 40, lot one. I look to staff to introduce us, please.
Mr. Chairman, may I, I have recused myself from this item in the past, so I'm gonna step down.
There's a motion from Mr. Walsh.
I'm, yeah, moved to allow Mr. Benson to recuse himself from this item.
Is there a second, Mr. Delaney, thank you. I think we're all in agreement with this, all those in favor? Anyone opposed?
So, do we need to vote every time this comes up, or is that just, can that just be a blanket recusal?
I think we should vote.
Okay.
Just for the record. Yep, yep, thank you, thank you Colonel Lawson. I'm still looking to staff, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, again, so this is a contract zone similar to the last one, the applicant is asking for this contract zone, so this is on for a public hearing. The planning board had this on for December 2nd, it forwarded to the comprehensive plan implementation committee, they held two meetings on it, January 6th and January 14th, and forwarded the revised language back to this group for a public hearing this evening. Really, the comprehensive plan implementation committee had really two changes proposed at one meeting, the changes are shown in blue, they wanted to strike out one of the whereas that talks about the building permit, and giving the applicant some flexibility if they want to pull a building permit. And then on page 10, it basically just wanted to identify, or clearly identify what the permitted uses are allowed on the site, and a little bit of flexibility, so you'll see under rural entrepreneurial use, that's basically defined as what's in our ordinance under rural uses, so we just use that language. F and G were struck out because they just were found to be redundant, and then the language shown in red is really just to, under B and C, basically talks about how many people can attend and how many events they can have, just clearly identify that. D, just, it, the language was kind of a little bit restrictive, so allowing a little bit of flexibility that ensured enough parking, but giving flexibility to the applicant and the town when reviewing off-site parking standards just made sense, and then F just identifies that anything that's not changed here, the applicant has to meet the requirements under agritourism, which is under chapter one, rural districts, section 1G. So, with that, we'd answer any questions the board has.
Thank you, Mr. Poria. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing, is there anyone that would like to address the planning board? If you would, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. Going once, anyone, please, anyone like to address us? Should have some music. Going twice, anyone, please. I can beg. I see no one rising, third time. All else, that the public hearing is closed, please, thank you. Looking to the planning board, thank you, Mr. Frank, you guys, your team, your folks met several times, nice edits, thank you for that time. Of course, Mr. Poria, so, I know there have been other opportunities for other people approaching the planning board over the years, is this language, I understand it's a contract zone, it's an exclusive contract, is this more liberal, are other venues gonna say, hey, you're giving them something that we don't have?
No, so, this is a little bit more restrictive than what's allowed in the rural district, this is in the urban residential district, it's probably one of the only bigger parcels that has a farm on it, so actually, this is a little bit more restrictive than the rural agritourism, just because of the site and the requirements around it, so I would say the number of events and attendees is a little bit smaller than what's allowed under agritourism in the rural district.
Thank you for the clarification, thank you, I appreciate it. Mr. Walsh.
I read, reading the comments from the town attorney, it did seem like there was some discrepancy with the number of people allowed at an event versus the acreage, is this language here meant to be an exception to that language?
Yes, so, I think it's, the number of events is down, and then the number of attendees, I think you're right, maybe the 175, 100 attendees would be allowed, I think the 175 may be the only flexibility that's a little bit, allows a little bit, number of units above what's a minimum lot size.
All right, so we are, so this agreement is correct, 175.
Correct.
Although it is 10 plus acres.
Yes.
Okay, okay, that's fine, thank you for clarifying that, I guess my only comment on the entire thing is that the, as I understand, from the applicant, you know, they're interested in having events such as weddings, it just seems like if you allow 175 people and there is no infrastructure for sanitation, it all has to be brought in, it just seemed a little extreme to me. And was it discussed, Russell, at your committee meeting, was that, or is that normal? Just seems like a lot.
So, it's normal for agritourism, so the thought was when we were allowing flexibility for these events, is allowing these events to identify, yeah, maybe a lot to bring that many septic systems, I mean, not porta potties on the site to serve that many units, but giving flexibility to, again, we're trying to allow these bigger lots that have farms the ability to get revenue so they remain open, so there was a flexibility of a give and take, identifying that, okay, if they have that bigger an event, we may look at how many porta potties that are brought on site, just to make sure it's adequate, but as long as we feel it's adequate, then they can, they can do it for that temporary event.
Okay.
Members of the board, would you like Ms. Flatt to address us? Any questions that we might have? Is there anything you wanna, no one else had anything you wanna approach, it's up to you, I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
I'm happy to answer any questions.
You got a pass? Any wordsmithing, anything anyone sees? Do we have the word trip in here instead of the word strip? Anyone, ladies and gentlemen? I think this has been on the fast track, but it's been well-developed and well-reviewed. And on the page 12 of 12, we have a motion, if someone would like to, Ms. Nichols, please.
Mr. Chairman, Barbara Nichols, I'd like to move to recommend the town council adopt the contract zone agreement.
Thank you, because I don't believe we have any revisions whatsoever, so it's gonna be static as is.
Those red, those red changes are your changes.
Yeah, oh, okay, as revised by the planning board.
As presented.
Which was really by the planning department.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, so as revised.
As presented.
Thank you. Is there a second, please?
Mr. Frank.
Mr. Frank, thank you. Any other discussion, we're all set? Any other recommendations? We're good? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you, congratulations. Thank you. Colonel, would you like to join us again? How we doing, we okay?
Doing well.
Anyone, need to take a break, we're all set, keep going?
Doing. We're on a roll.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, item three, this is a public hearing, zoning amendments to the Gorham Village area, proposed revisions to current zoning to include Gorham Village Center District, Little Falls Village Center District, urban commercial development, transfer overlay, and office residential districts to amend setbacks in previous surface ratios and building heights in support of economic development. I look to planning to open this up for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so the proposed changes are to five districts, one, Gorham Village Center District, Little Falls Village Center, urban commercial development, transfer, overlay, and. urban commercial development, transfer overlay, and then the office residential district. So the proposed changes are really in regards to space standards. And what the council's looking to do is, one, allow a little bit more flexibility in those, those districts to, one, building setbacks and minimum side rear setbacks to meet, one, the intent of the comp plan, and then, two, to kind of reinforce the design that currently happened in the Gorham Village Center District, Little Falls Village Centers District, as well as urban commercial. So kind of looked at the comp plan and then looked at the area to say, what does it, what was it designed and what was it built as? And how do we continue to replicate that should someone want to? So that's what the proposed changes are on, in front of you this evening. And again, this is a recommendation that you make to the council, and then this item is on for a public hearing this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Poria. Any questions from Mr. Poria?
Mr. Chairman, just.
Pretty straightforward, but I don't wanna jump the gun there.
One clarification, please?
Mr. Walsh, please.
Just want to clarify, when reading through on building height, so the existing language on several of these, on page 10 and 12 and over until 11, building height, right now, there are no restrictions. And then you're, you're removing one restriction and having none.
Correct.
So, okay. So that means someone could come in and propose six, eight stories if they wanted?
As long as they could meet all the other site constraints that are required on the land use code.
Correct. Be interesting.
Please, Colonel.
So some of these seem like pretty drastic changes. As an example, on page 11, when you're talking about setbacks going from 70 feet down to 10 feet. And then I know there's an asterisk that says it's supposed to be consistent with the buildings in the neighborhood. I just was wondering why such a drastic reduction from 70 feet to 10 feet and what the purpose of that was versus the original intent of having a 70-foot requirement.
So those proposed changes are the development transfer overlay district. So the planning board remembers, so the development transfer overlay standard is an optional district that a developer chooses to go into should they want to develop in a more urban area and a more urban-style pattern. When we were looking through making the changes in those districts, it seemed weird that if you were gonna allow someone to develop more urban, the setbacks were greater. So you had to go look at the development transfer to say, okay, what's the pattern? What's the style? So basically, that, those standards in that development transfer are just mimicking what's being changed in the Gorham Village Centers Districts.
Okay. So that's consistent with?
Correct.
Our more urban, urban areas? Okay. Thank you.
That's why the ones in the rural district didn't change. It's just that urban.
Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, anything to pick apart? Any confusion? This is a public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to address the, Mrs. Robie, I see you are approaching. Take your time.
My name is Susan Robie. I live at 34 Robie Street. And I am here because of the statement in, I think, Village Residential that there should be only sewered homes. Is that correct?
Say that again?
That there would be no, there would only be sewered homes. That they had to have, they had to connect to the sewer. We talked a lot about sewers tonight. It's in there for Village Residential. Unless I'm wrong. If I'm wrong, I'll go away.
So Urban Residential, if, if you're located on a street that has sewer in front of it, they have to connect. That, that's a requirement.
Okay.
For any development. The proposed changes for Urban Residential only has to do with setbacks. There's no changes regarding sewer.
Okay. But there's a statement in there. There should be no, everyone should, could, but, all right. So years ago, 18 years ago, we built a private way and a lot for our son, and we could not connect to the sewer or water because it was 200 feet. And that's as far as the water district will bring anything. Okay. Recently, you have allowed flag lots. We have the 25-feet road that we need, and we'd like to put, be able, not that we're gonna do it, to, to have a lot for another kid that is more than 200 feet from the sewer. So I'm here to find out if you're going to abide by what's in the code. I talked to the code officer today that if you are beyond 200 feet, you can put in the septic system because we can't connect to the sewer.
So you're, you're talking backlot provision, so?
That's right.
I, I think that's a different discussion. My assumption is if you're in a backlot and you're building behind a lot that has access to public sewer, you're gonna have to extend public sewer to the backlot.
How can we do that? They don't do it.
It's gonna be a pri, they don't do it for public. It will be a pri, it will be just like, whether it's a pump or whether it's gravity, you can connect to public sewer. There's no requirement or standard that says you can't.
I think there is.
I'm not aware of it.
Then how come we couldn't do it before?
I'm not sure. I'd have to look into it. Now, there may not have been the requirement that the town made you do it, that you have got an exemption that you didn't have to.
We didn't. We wanted to do it.
I'm not aware of it.
I wouldn't bet against Mrs. Robie, myself.
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not aware of any, like, why the water district wouldn't allow, I mean, because they have sewer mains on all kinds of condominiums that weigh over 200 feet that are sewored and water, and they're private. And the water district maintains them. So I'm not quite sure, Snowbird, I mean, there's a bunch of them that are way longer than that, that are public-sewored. So I'm not sure.
Service from the house might be private and connect to the public at the, that one. Maybe the Delta is.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure.
I, I talked to the code people today, and they read it out of the code. Your code, Gorham code.
That's the requirement to connect to, you're talking about extension of public sewer, I think.
No, I'm not.
Are you talking about the backlot?
A back, you said we, the, the ordinance that I read said that you could put a backlot in. Now, you never used to be able to. With a road.
Correct.
Right. And alls you had to have was the frontage. That, you know, that the road connected to. And because of our experience with the private way, I went and measured it. It's more than 200 feet. And the water district said that they would not extend water 200 feet.
I, I think, why don't you come to the, we get set up a time and you can come, we can have a conversation. I mean, none of the changes here have anything to do with that. So these are just set, side setbacks that are proposed in Urban Residential. There's nothing with sewer and water with this.
Yeah, there, there was. I read it. I mean, I'll have to find it again. It was under Village Residential.
That's the comp.
There's a comprehensive plan statement about that.
That's the comp plan statement. That's not being proposed to be changed here. The change in the ordinance is what's being changed. There's nothing, we included the stuff from the comp plan.
So you're not proposing changing anything in the Village Residential or you're?
Just side setbacks.
Okay. All right. So it has always been that if you had a big enough lot, you could put in a septic system in the district that we live in. Or did live in. The house is still there, but I think it's still Urban Residential. So if you have a, I'm thinking enough lot, you can put in a septic system.
I think you should, let's set up a time that you come to the office. We could, we could talk through all the requirements for sewer and when you have to sewer and when you can use a private septic system. Because they're complicated and there's a lot of factors that go into that.
Okay. Well, I guess we would like to know. I mean, not that we're gonna do it because we're pretty old, but we would like to know for our children's sake what we can do. Okay.
Yeah.
What about the accessory buildings that are in the same lot? How do you deal with that if they're more than 200 feet away from the sewer?
Again, I think we should have a conversation in the office to have a, talk through all the requirements.
Okay. There is language that the planning board can give waivers in the code, in the, not the land, I don't know why it's different, what the code offer, code officer takes care of.
Yeah, there is, in the, in the sewer ordinance, there's clear language of when it's, when it's required and when it's not. So again, I recommend, if you're in the office, I like to talk through it.
All right. And my only other comment is about the five-foot setbacks in transfer of development. One of the things that I, when I read it and I was part of the group that did the transfer of development ordinance, that would potentially allow people to build, it's a small lot, a fairly big house. And how would you ensure that they could get to their backyard for maintenance? Five feet is not enough for a truck. It seems to me to be a little bit extreme. I think you ought to be able to get a vehicle behind a house that is gonna be smack up against other houses. There's not gonna be an alley, you know, on a, on a, you could put eight houses in an acre. The four that have two sides are all right, but then you've got four houses in the middle that, given how they position their house, they may not think about it when they first build it. They won't be able to get behind it for any kind of maintenance that requires something wider than five feet. That's my thought. I, I don't have any vested interest in transfer of development anymore, but when I looked at it, it occurred to me that you might wanna think about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Robie. Colonel, please.
Yeah, so that goes to my earlier question about the 70 to 10. And, you know, on, on, under number two, Land Use Development Code, Chapter 1, Section 1-9, Gorham Village Center goes to five feet. Urban Residential goes to five feet, or, I'm sorry, 15 feet. It's the urban commercial district goes to five feet. Is that consistent with other areas of the code?
So I'm gonna try to interpret what the council was doing. What the council's trying to do is give flexibility for these lots to develop more urbanly. So the Little Falls area, allowing a smaller setback regarding buildings. But just so you know, on Gorham Village Center and Little Falls Village Center, setbacks also dictate where you can construct parking. So by going to five feet there, it also allows more flexibility to have better parking lot layout in those areas. So I'm assuming that has to do with that. Now, urban commercial, they're proposing to go to five, 10 to five. Office residential, they're proposing to go to five. If the planning board wants to recommend something different, you can do that as part of your recommendation. If you wanna go to eight or 10 on any of these, that's certainly something the board could do as part of their review if you think five is too small.
But without seeing, without seeing a, a map or knowing what the, what the rationale for changing it is, it's hard to comment.
Well, yeah, so the map?
Like, I'd have to see specific lot layouts in the, in the five, five feet.
Yeah, so, I mean, we, we tried to include all the maps of the districts being proposed to be changed. The only, the only one that's not shown here is the Urban Residential. It's a bigger district. But again, we're not, we're only doing front and, front yard setback, a, a minimum and a maximum. So we're not doing side setbacks as part of that. But all the other districts are identified in those maps. But it is hard on a lot-by-lot basis to try to identify what flexibility.
I'm sorry. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Has, has, has fire been able to comment on this?
Say that again?
Has the fire department been able to comment on this?
Oh, has, has the fire?
To Mrs. Robie's point, access along the side. Five feet, to me personally, you know, five feet. Not much.
I mean, if you, if you go into other urban areas, five, there are buildings that are five feet apart. So I mean, that's not unusual, but it's not, it's not typical for Gorham, for sure.
It would actually be 10 feet apart.
Right. Five feet from the lot.
Five to five.
Five to five.
Yes.
So the buildings themselves would be 10 feet apart.
Unless there was a fence.
Or a shrub or?
Unless, unless a fence or a shrub.
Rock wall.
Okay. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, the public hearing still was not closed. Just to help you out there.
Okay. Good point. Good point. We had till 10 o'clock, right? Then we're gonna, anyone else like to address us while I was sleeping? I apologize.
Oh, no worries at all. Gary Jordan, Sunrise Lane. I also own two properties in the office residential area. I guess the big question I would have is more, I think, towards your point, sir. So what's the intent? What, what should I be looking at as I, as I continue to develop or as I do things? What should I be doing differently? Or what is the goal of this change? As I think you pointed out, Mr. Poria, the, the gross square footage and other things are gonna be probably my more limiting factor than the setbacks. I don't personally feel as though I'm getting anything out of those setback changes. Most of the houses on that road are very old houses. They're, they've been there for a very long time. The setbacks already exist. I could see maybe one-off people having, you know, situational problems, but I'm not seeing anything, at least for the office residential in my personal scenario. I don't see anything that gives me any change that is actionable.
So in office residential, it identifies the minimum of front standards. So the requirement is now to have those, continue to those, have those dwelling units or buildings pulled towards the front of the lot instead of back to the lot. So kind of getting a, a wall of buildings along Main Street consistent with what's there. It allows a little bit of flexibility. So if you did want to do an expansion to five feet within the setback instead of 20, so that's a 15-foot increase if you do an expansion on the building towards a side property line. And then the other part is, if you didn't have a building on your lot, there's no minimum height. So you can go above the, what I would say, 30 feet, two and a half, two stories, three stories, maybe. So you can go higher should you have that ability. So that's what you're, that's what's being proposed this evening for that district.
Copy. I guess my only comment would be is if there, if the goal is to drive any change in that district, unless you had a vacant lot, a fire where there was all burned down, I don't feel as though this is, you know, this, it would have to be something significant that actually drives somebody to make a change based on just the setbacks with just as a personal problem. If there's any goal to actually make, you know, developers actually make interest in making change, something more substantive would have to happen. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Lady and gent, anyone on the board? Any other questions? My, my comment was five feet. I understand side-by-side, that's 10 feet. But again, Colonel and I were talking about fences or rock walls or something. And my question was, with fire, had any input? Chief Fickett, would he have any? Or would he have to wait till it's closed before the council?
We can definitely share it with the council and then, and have him provide any ring comments to the council as they move it forward. I'm not sure what the council will do with any recommendations from the fire, from the, from the fire department. So, but we can definitely include it, share it with them and have them provide it as part of the package to the town council.
Thank you. Anyone? Anyone on the board? On page 12 of 12, we have two motions. When someone declined. Is there anyone else that want, wants to address the public? Before I forget again, anyone else on this particular issue? The ordinance amendment. The ordinance amendment, going once, going twice, the public hearing is now closed. Thank you. Back to the board. Mr. Walsh?
Just, do we, do we make any changes?
I think we asked that the chief be included in the discussion. Be invited into discussion and...
But we didn't make any changes to the text.
You did not make any changes.
No, all right. So I make a motion, I move to recommend approval of the Gorm Village zoning amendments to the town council.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Second.
Mr. Frank.
Frank. We're all set, we made any changes? We just made a recommendation that we would like Chief Fickett to be included when they address the council. Anyone else? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you. Would we, can I share why?
Sure. I, I don't see how the changes, I don't understand how the changes meet the purpose, the stated purpose of improving economic opportunity in the stated districts. So without having that be obvious, or anybody would be able to explain it to me? I don't, I don't feel like I can approve it.
Thank you, Colonel, I appreciate that. How are we doing? Long? Everyone needs to take a break? No? Let's go? All right. Item four, please. Item four. Item four is a public hearing. Preliminary subdivision and site plan review, Cressy's Apartment, Flaggy Meadow Road LLC, Cressy Apartments. The proposal to construct 16 units of apartment housing in two eight-unit buildings with park and associated infrastructure. Zone suburban residential, map 36, lots 12 and 15.001. The applicant is represented by Connor Barassa, PE with Northeast Civil Solutions. I'd look to staff to open this up, please.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. So this application was before the board, once before, in September for sketch plan review. The board and staff provided numerous comments that the applicant has then taken and incorporated into next version of the proposal that is before you this evening. They're looking for preliminary subdivision and site plan approval. They have, the application's been reviewed by staff, peer review engineers, a number of comments have been added to the memo. So some general items of note to highlight that the board may wish to discuss with the applicants. Mind, first of all, that the applicant is, will be required to obtain state and federal permits for stormwater. They're planning to submit for those permits after they secure preliminary review. The additional information needs to be provided to show the access drive for the proposed buildings and parking lot area. Vehicle turning movements should be provided to show there's adequate space for emergency vehicles and other large vehicles that need to access the site to maneuver. Sidewalks are required in this district. They're not provided in the plans, so sidewalks are required both on the site and off-site. There is a provision for fee in lieu of off-site sidewalks. The applicant should provide a hydro geological study to show that adequate subsurface wastewater disposal can be provided for. There's existing septic service on the site for the existing 30 apartments, so adding the additional 16 units is something that they'll have to show that they're able to adequately provide for. The Conservation Commission staff suggests that there be a discussion about public access to the area in the rear of the site. They're showing a proposed recreational trail, and it may, at this, at this time, it's not being proposed for public access, and that's something that the Conservation Commission asked that be brought up. And there's a requirement in the land use code for 250 square feet of lockable storage, and we would ask that additional details showing that be shown. And there are additional staff and peer review comments as well that need to be addressed. And one other item, the applicant's requesting a waiver from the requirement for a Class A soil survey to a Class B that is allowed under the land use code because public water is provided at the site. With that, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Ms. Yarkalov. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. Thank you. Does anyone like to address this issue? Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Again, this is a public hearing. Anyone? Anyone like to address us? Going once, going twice. Again, anyone want to address the planning board? As you know, we're in rising, I will close the public hearing. Members of the board, would we like to hear from Mr. Barassa? Please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. Thank you for having me here again tonight. I'm actually not Mr. Barassa, I'm Mr. Garrish. Connor Barassa was our, submitted the application, but I'm the design engineer for the project from Northeast Civil Solutions. I have with me here Troy McDonald, who's the surveyor of record for the project from Northeast Civil Solutions, and we're here representing Stephanie Cressy of Cressy's Apartments. And if it's okay, I will just give you a brief overview of the project. We were here in September for a sketch plan meeting. Very little has changed, but if it's okay, I'll go through the, the project real quickly and then address some of the comments. So the, just starting out, the, just in general...
Excuse me, one second, please, if you don't mind. I want to make sure that the drawings that we have in our packet are what this is being displayed here. Do we know that? This, this, the drawing I have is revision one. Revision one, it appears to be the same, same version. Mr. Barassa, you're pretty good.
Sorry, right, look at the revision block.
It looks pretty good.
11025.
I see that, I see that as well. I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page.
Yep. Now, these are, these are, we just, we've made no changes to the drawings since they were submitted.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Just in general, the project is to create 16 additional apartment units in two buildings. The existing apartment buildings are located over on this side of the site. The site is off Flaggy Meadow Road, and there is an existing barn located in this, this vicinity. That's the high point of the site. There's a duplex building over here that was constructed in about 2014. Five apartment buildings that were actually developed in the early 1970s, and then there is a single-family residential home on the property, too, that dates back quite a ways. So that's just in general, the project. The, just switching to the boundary survey for the site, you can see the, the development that exists on the site is right in this portion of the site, in the southeast corner. The entire parcel itself is made up of three parcels, all by the same, owned by Cressy's Apartments LLC, and the, the site as, in total, is 86 acres. The little river runs through the northern part of the site, back in here, and then off-site to the east. And again, here's just a, a little bit of a blow-up of the existing conditions plan. If I switch to the aerial mapping, you can see the site is right in here, and this is all undeveloped woodland for the remaining majority of the 86 acres. Looking at the proposed site layout plan, the main access drive, and we did acknowledge the comments, we'll discuss that in a minute, but the main access drive is proposed to come off Flaggy Meadow Road and then through the existing apartment buildings, the apartment sites, the internal driveway for the existing apartments, and then be extended to a 24-foot wide driveway that circles around the facility. There's 10 parking spaces proposed in each of these locations, adjacent to each door, so that would be 20 parking spaces available for each unit, for each building, which is 16 units each. We also have a secondary access road. This is intended for emergency vehicles. During the sketch plan review, it was, it was commented by staff that this secondary access road had to be improved to 20 feet in width to accommodate emergency vehicles. There is signage proposed to just limit that to the, the emergency access. So the intent is, is that all, all regular traffic will come, you know, travel around the site and then come in and out through the internal driveway for the existing apartments. There has been a traffic study done as well, which determined adequate site distance, no impact on the capacity, very few, just six to nine peak hour trips generated by the addition, and no high-crash locations in the vicinity. And just looking at the site grading real quickly, the, again, the high point of the site is right about where the barn is. The area is here, slope gently down towards Flaggy Meadow Road. Everything in the rear of the site slopes relatively gently towards the north, and then it gets steeper in some areas over here. Here is the existing wastewater disposal systems that extend over in this area for the existing five apartment buildings, and we are proposing to treat stormwater with a couple, there are a couple of catch basins on this side of the site. Basically, everything is still draining from south to, I guess, southeast to north, northwest, in the same direction as it does now. We're proposing a underdrained soil filter in this area and another one over in this area that will pick up 95% plus of the runoff from the impervious areas, 80% from the overall development areas, in accordance with Chapter 500 DEP standards, as well as meeting town standards for stormwater control. And basically, other than those two catch basins and, and a couple of color pipes and storm drains, everything from the, the new site development is proposed to just drain off via sheet flow to the stormwater facilities. There is a proposed trail, as discussed, that would come down this, this kind of traverse down the embankment at about a 15 to one slope, and then it gradually flattens out and goes out into the undeveloped areas into the rear. And then just quickly on utilities, there is a 12-inch water main in Flaggy Meadow Road that will serve this development. There's a proposed domestic and fire service main that's proposed to come up the east side of the site through the secondary emergency access road area with a proposed fire hydrant within the development, and basically the, the accessing the two buildings on the west side where the mechanical room is for both the domestic water service and the sprinklers, and underground electric and telecommunications utilities are proposed to come off an existing overhead pole to a pad-mounted transformer over in this area. There are two proposed dumpsters for the site on either side for each building. The proposed pad-mounted transformer is proposed to go right next to one of the dumpsters, and then it can service both of the buildings from there. There is no public, or there is no gas service available to the site, so propane is proposed for underground propane tanks to serve each building. And then there's also no sewer, so as mentioned earlier, onsite wastewater disposal systems are proposed. Initially, our site evaluators completed the test pits to determine suitable soils. We're proposing two systems, one for each building, consisting of, of concrete chambers for disposal, one in this area and another one in this area over here. And there is, we are considering pre-treatment as well, which reduces the nitrate levels and also allows smaller systems. Those systems haven't been designed yet. We've completed the initial site assessment to determine suitability for septic, for preliminary, and certainly upon approval of preliminary, we'll move forward with those septic designs. Then just, just as a quick overview, just to kind of show you the magnitude of the site for drainage, there is two specific, I guess, drainage areas on the site that are impacted by the development. This is pre-development conditions. Again, the barn in here would be the, the high point of the site, and then the southerly part of the site just gently slopes off to Flaggy Meadow Road, which has a ditch, and there is a storm drain under the entrance to the duplex. So that would be the study point for what we're calling subcatchment one, where the actual proposed apartments are. I'll go to the post-development, just so you can see that. The area drains in a more northerly direction. This, this plan is basically 90 degrees to the other plans I've been showing you. So here's this, the proposed development site in here. You can see the contours all come down in this direction, and basically, there are some kind of long wetland fingers in the ravines in this area, so that would go through this big wooded area, through these areas, all the way down to the little river before it discharges back off to the northeast. So this is kind of a large area, there's about 1,500 feet of wooded buffer between any of the development up here and the bank of the little river. And then just moving on to the next drawing, which would be the net density plan. And again, I've turned things back 90 degrees to the original way that we've been looking at things, and just looking at the site, the development site would be in this area. We've identified the deductions from the net density calculations. These bright green areas would be the onsite wetlands. You can see there are no wetlands in any, anywhere near the vicinity of the proposed site. The purple areas that you see down here would be the steep slopes. The red areas that you'd see down here are the poorly drained soils. There are no very poorly drained soils. Most of the soils on the site are moderately to well-drained, but down in the lower areas, there are some, some poorly drained soils that were deducted. The blue area down here would be the hundred-year flood plain in the area of the little river, and then these other green areas are either isolated areas or areas not available for development. Certainly, the areas across the, on the other side of the river would be considered isolated, as well as the existing wastewater disposal areas would not be suitable for development. as well as the existing wastewater disposal areas would not be suitable for development. Deducting all of those areas for the, from the thirty-six acres, from the eighty-six acres, the total acreage of the parcel suitable for development was about thirty-six acres, which would accommodate fifty dwelling units total. With the thirty dwelling units onsite and the sixteen proposed, we would be in compliance with the net density requirements. And these, there was a high-intensity Class B soil survey completed for the site. We did request a waiver from the Class A soil survey for your consideration. We would note that this large part of the site where the soil survey was conducted in addition to the development site is proposed to be, to remain undeveloped. And with the public water available to the site, the waiver request, we feel, is justified. We're happy to answer any questions you might have on that. And then just to get back to some of the review comments, I, there were a number of comments. Many of them were relatively minor in nature and very easy to address in the final submission. I do want to touch on some of the notable comments that will require a little more thought. And the first one I want to discuss is the, you know, the requirement to provide additional information on the access drive, the internal driveway that comes in through here. As we're showing it now, we just proposed to use the existing access driveway. It is paved. It, we'll have to look into it to see if it currently meets the standards for Section 2.5 of the ordinance. If not, certainly, we understand that it will need to be upgraded to meet those standards. Those standards would require a twenty-foot-wide access drive, certain depths of pavement, and so forth. I will state that it is proposed to be an internal driveway. We're not proposing a private way, a private road, or anything that would require a fifty-foot right-of-way through that area. Our plan is, is that the site is accessed on the Flaggy Meadow Road, public road, right-of-way, and that the loop roads and everything within the site would be considered access driveways. And then, again, getting back to the sidewalk, yes, we are on the, we did err in the application where we didn't realize we were within the pedestrian overlay zone. We are on, on somewhat of the outer limits of that, but we are within that zone. We understand that an internal sidewalk will be required, which we would propose to bring along the access road out through here, where the secondary access road is just proposed for emergency use, and there's an existing duplex dwelling right next to it. We would not propose a sidewalk on that road. The pedestrian and vehicular traffic are all proposed to come out through this way. So that was, that would be where the sidewalk would be proposed. And being in the pedestrian overlay district, the nearest sidewalk, I believe, I don't know the exact distance, but it's several thousand feet from the site. So we would propose to pay the in-lu fee as opposed to constructing a sidewalk all the way to connect to an existing sidewalk. And then one of the comments was to provide the turning movements through the site. We certainly, we've done that internally. We just haven't submitted a plan. And we can certainly do that for the final submission. And with regards to public access to the trails, we did not include that in the preliminary submission. We will certainly consult with the applicant and, and consider that for the final submission as well. We are still working on the ability-to-serve letter from the Portland Water District. There is a twelve-inch water main out on Flaggy Meadow Road that certainly does have the capacity to service this site. The Water District has changed their standards somewhat recently. I spoke with Robert Bartels. This seems to be an issue on a lot of projects. They're not issuing preliminary ability-to-serve letters any longer. They're basically requiring you to do the full design, including the sprinkler design, where they just issue one final ability-to-serve letter. So in, in this particular case, and what we find with a lot of projects is the developer usually likes to at least get site plan approval or get a good indication that things are moving in a good direction before they invest in the final building designs. And, and the sprinkler design tends to be one of the last things done. So we're having a hard time getting the information to the Water District on a lot of projects to get an ability-to-serve letter. So oftentimes, we ask that that gets conditioned in the final approval. We're still working with them. I think this would be NFPA 13R-type development, which is a little easier to, to address from the sprinkler demands. So we may be able to get that. But I just want to give you a heads up, we're working on that. That could be difficult, based on their new standards, to get until the final building designs and sprinkler designs are complete. And then, the final thing I did want to talk about is the hydro-geological study. There certainly are some good-sized wastewater disposal systems on the site. We are proposing two new ones that would have a capacity of about fourteen hundred gallons per day each. And the, typically, if a project like this, we look at where the groundwater impacts, you know, could, could, you know, create an impact to an abiding property or an off-site private well or something like that. All of the existing facilities on the site are all served by public water from Flaggy Meadow Road. We did check with the Water District today, and the three nearest abutters on the east side of Adams Drive are also served by public water. We're still looking at some of the abutters that are further out away from the site. I will just note that here is the, I'm showing the existing wastewater disposal areas here, and the proposed ones would be back further up here. The, the site grades do all slope in this direction to the northwest, which would be away from the, any of the abutters that are on this side. It, there, again, I, as I stated earlier, there's going to be about fifteen hundred linear feet of wooded undeveloped land between the disposal areas and down to the, where it does enter the Little River. Groundwater flows tend to migrate in the same direction as the surface water. So based on, you know, we're, we're certainly, based on the comment, we'll consult with our hydrogeologist and, and come up with some recommendations. But we don't anticipate any issues from that. And if we can determine that there are no private wells in the vicinity, then we will either do the assessment per staff recommendations or we will attempt to justify the, I guess, the need or the justify not providing it based on the site conditions. I do believe the peer review engineer indicated that if private wells were in the vicinity, that it would be justified, and we would certainly agree with that. So, so that, we still have to look into a little bit, a little bit further. But again, Five Adams Drive, Eight Sider Mill Drive, and Twenty Sider Mill Drive, or Lane, the, the Water District did note to us today that they have public water. So, and those are the abutters over in this area. And then, all the other comments were, again, relatively minor, providing public use or private outdoor space for the units. And there's plenty of space on the site. We'll more specifically identify that. The indoor storage would be in the existing barn. There's plenty of room in there. We can identify that and certainly can address all the other comments in the final submission. So I guess with that, I will open it up to any questions you might have.
Thank you. Members of the board? Anyone? Mr. Walsh, please.
Could you just tell us how you're going to control the traffic on that emergency driveway?
We were going to control it by signs. We'd rather not put gates up, but we were going to put signage on each end, and that was one of the review comments stating emergency vehicles only. There will be, obviously, there is a duplex on this driveway that will have to continue to use it, and their parking lot is out back, so.
What is, Mr. Moore, I guess whoever, what is the downside to that being used? What prevents that being used as a normal driveway?
Technically?
Yeah.
Nothing. In practice, it would be the, the property owner enforcing their rules on the no parking.
So, I mean, Chuck, is it built to a standard that it would be an acceptable driveway?
Yes. So this would be considered along the lines of a condominium drive. So it would still need to be designed and constructed to a, a private road standard. However, it would not be encompassed in right-of-way.
So if they were presenting this as a drive, a condominium driveway and had no intention of using it for public, for emergency use only, we would be okay with that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So it's purely a property owner?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
There's also some access management considerations where that emergency access drive is close to Adams Drive, which is a private way. So that's one, one consideration as well.
Okay. And then I, just one other question. This is subject to, it's pointed out in the, in the text that this is subject to the growth ordinance, going build one building at a time. From a constructability standpoint, that's impractical. At least, in my opinion, it seems to be impractical. If you're going to gear up to build a building, you want to build two buildings at once, I would imagine. So how is, how are you dealing with that?
Well, we haven't, haven't thought that one out yet, but I can say that the intent was to build everything at once within about, I think the construction period is, is proposed to be a little over a year. So, but, yeah, it would be more cost-effective to construct everything at once.
So, hold that thought. Throw it back over here. This is type, you know, we need this type of housing. The growth ordinance is, I understand it's kind of built around single-family homes, at least, if I've read it right, maybe I haven't, or understand it. We really would like to see more apartments, workforce housing, seems to be the politically correct term today for that. So is the growth ordinance going to get in the way of that? Is it a good application to apply the growth ordinance to this?
Well, there are exemptions in the growth ordinance for deed-restricted workforce housing, for fifty-five-plus housing, which I believe they're not going to be looking for any of those exemptions.
But it's discussions that they could have with you?
Sorry?
If they so chose, they could have those discussions with you?
Yes. The other thing they could do is, it's, the growth permits are on a calendar-year basis, so.
Yeah.
And they, they have a six-month duration before applicants have to get building permits. So what they could do is span two calendar years.
Yeah, yeah.
That is, that's one option. When there's fewer than twenty units proposed, so there's, there's some options. And also, I believe the board earlier this evening did discuss looking at the growth ordinance. So that is something
Right.
that you may want to consider as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, please, Ms. Nichols.
So I have a question about on your map, when it shows the whole piece of property, the whole three parcels. How many acres is that?
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six acres. And then these apartment buildings are going to be built, of course, at this one end. Is the rest of that going back up to the river remaining wild? Or is this just one step and you're going to start building back into all that uncut habitat?
No, I mean, there may be a future possibility to extend that road back a little further on the other side, excuse me, on the east side of the pond and do a little more. But given the limitations with all the deductions, there aren't a whole lot of units that can be added to the site. So this would be largely the, it, it, it's not proposed to go way back into that big undeveloped area out back. There's just not enough capacity on the site to accommodate the density.
Anyone else? Yes, please.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Oh, you're good? Okay. My, my own editorial comments, there was a lot of yellow. Remember, yellow are areas that have been highlighted by the planning department that we need to try and close the loop on. The sidewalk issue was brought up prior to this, and I would have liked to have seen it been addressed. There are many other issues, pages fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. It gives me a little bit of hesitation. Please, Colonel.
Chair, Mr. Gersh, it sounded like you, are you looking for preliminary approval tonight? Because it sounded like maybe you weren't because you understood that there were other things that needed to be addressed and that you'd be coming back in front of us again, so.
Oh, no, we, we would, we, we feel very confident that if we got preliminary approval tonight, then we could move forward with our DEP submissions and come back with a, a final package that did adequately address all of these issues. A lot of the yellow is essentially the same, you know, two or three comments with regards to the groundwater study and basically the access drive meeting the, the road standards and so forth, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm glad you brought this up because it was one of the last thing I had. But I really wanted, thought maybe throw the question at staff. I mean, are you comfortable with this level of yellow? I know we have approved, at preliminary, we've approved with a bunch of yellow in the past. It's a question of how much yellow and what is it? And are you comfortable with this amount?
Well, there's a spectrum, I think. And, well, one thing the board should vote on this evening would recommend is the, is the waiver.
Mm-hmm.
One thing as far as business.
For the soil survey?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And, I, I mean, I would say the, the biggest thing here that, you know, you might want to review further would be the accessway design, because they haven't submitted that. So if that's something you want to look at. I looked at the town engineer too, to see if, what his comfort level is with not having that designed to review at this point.
We're talking about the sidewalk access?
Well, the sidewalk and the access drive. So we don't have the, for the, the primary accessway, there's, on the existing driveway, through accessway, there's, on the existing driveway through to the apartment complex, there's not design details showing that. It was built in the 1970s, so we don't have anything showing that it meets the modern design standards. So, that is something where I think we might want to look to the engineer, to his comfort level.
Yeah, and I think my comment on that would be, I would, as a developer, I would appreciate getting to some level of preliminary approval before it was, before the effort was made to start doing evaluations on existing infrastructure. And that drive, part of that drive being existing, I think it's more than adequate to allow them to proceed forward and then, in further stages, get some information on, on what that existing infrastructure is and has been designed to, and what it can handle in the future. Corrings, you know, pavement reviews and evaluations and such.
Cross-sections.
Cross, well, yeah, the corrings would take care of whatever cross-sections.
Core drill.
Core drill.
Yeah, sure, sure, sure.
Evaluate what that is and provide that back to staff and the planning board to say it's built adequately to handle the additional traffic. It's a long way of saying I'm comfortable.
No, no, I hear that. I heard in between it. The core drilling thing is, curiously, is, is built to a different standard, perhaps.
Perhaps, but if the pavement structure is sufficient based on an engineer's review, I don't see why digging it up and reconstructing it to some small difference would make any
Sure, sure.
A lot of sense.
Thank you, thank you. Did everyone catch that? So, the first motion would be to talk about the soil survey. And waive that. From the Class A to the Class B, correct?
The Class A to the Class B.
Oh, no, that's, that's...
I think that's what they're talking about right now.
Correct?
Sorry, yes, that's the, that's the waiver they're looking for, going from Class A to Class B.
I'm looking to my left.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Walsh.
All right. We, from page two at the bottom, moved to grant a waiver to Cressy's Apartments Flaggy Meadow Road LLC to allow submission of a Class B soil survey instead of the required Class A soil survey for the two proposed eight-unit apartment buildings at tax maps 36 Lot 12 and Lot 15-1.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Well said. Is there a second?
I'll second that. Barbara Nichols.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. We're all set with that. We heard from planning that it is, it is a waiverable, is that a word? A waiverable?
Waivable.
Waivable, waivable, thank you. Again, parochial school, I didn't get all that English. All right, we're all set with that, folks? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you. One down.
So, on the next motion, is it appropriate to add conditions of approval for access road design, internal sidewalk design that are, that are big outstanding issues? Is that appropriate?
I, what I was going to piggyback onto Mr. Norton was that it won't go beyond the next design unless that is included on the drawings. But it's appropriate to certainly reiterate it.
Right. For preliminary approval, and we'd look to the condition number five, all staff and peer review comments shall be addressed prior to the board signing the plans. Now, these are conditions of approval that would be on the final plan. But for preliminary purposes, we would, we would look to having all of those staff and peer review issues addressed before recommending final approval, certainly.
All of the yellow gets cleaned up?
Yes, before any, before any final approval could be granted, yes.
Maybe that should be 24, all yellow is cleaned up? Only kidding, I apologize, only kidding.
That's what number five is.
Number five is about...
Five doesn't say it that, it's a different way of saying it, right? Thank you. Everyone follow that?
Mm-hmm.
All the yellow goes away with number five?
Yep.
Colonel, please.
Chair, I move to approve the preliminary subdivision inside plan for two eight-unit apartment buildings at Cressy Apartments located on Map Seven Lot 18 and Map Eight Lot 41 in suburban residential zoning districts based on finding a fact and conditions of approval as written by the town planner.
Any amendments? No amendments?
Amendments.
We had the waiver that was voted and approved, that's separate. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any other discussion on this item? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. How we doing? Are we doing okay? Minutes, just shake our legs, or are we going to go? Sorry? Uh, Mr. Dyke, we're going to take five minutes. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we're resuming our February 3, 2025 Planning Board meeting. We just took a brief recess. It's about 9:25 PM. We are approaching item five on our agenda this evening. It's a discussion, zoning map amendment, district changes. Proposed amendment to the zoning map to change Map 22 Lot 7 on Washburn Road from suburban residential district to the South Gorham Crossroads District. I look to planning to introduce this for us, please.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. So, the applicant is looking to have the zoning changed at this parcel. It's located at the end of Washburn Road, adjacent to the existing roundabout and the Gorham Bypass and South Street on the, on the corner there. The access is currently via Washburn. And the reason they stated they're looking for the zone change, and there are two maps accompanying the proposal. So, the first shows the parcel, and the reason they're looking for the zone change is to allow for development of commercial or denser residential development on the parcel that would be allowed in the South Gorham Crossroads versus the existing suburban residential zone. So, it's important to note that the area is proposed in the comprehensive plan to be zoned as South Gorham Crossroads. So, the zone change makes the parcel consistent with the comprehensive plan. And then, the board can evaluate whether it would like to move ahead with that and also consider, given that the comprehensive plan, as shown on the second map, shows this entire area of suburban residential being rezoned as South Gorham Crossroads. The council considered this, and the local, there was some local opposition to doing that. So, the council paused the rezoning approximately two years ago, when the rest of the South Gorham Crossroads zone was set. So, one thing that staff suggest the board consider is doing some outreach to see if there are additional parcels in the area that may want to be zoned, South Gorham Crossroads as well, which would also make those parcels more consistent with the comprehensive plan. With that, happy to answer any questions and turn over to you, Mr. Chair.
Yakhalev, so if I could cut to the chase, should we put this item on a pause until we reach out to the butters?
If the board would like to do that, then that may be worth, worth doing.
Does the board understand what I'm getting at?
Mm-hmm.
We're, we're saying, hey, maybe there are others in the area that want to do that. So, rather than discuss this and then go back and forth and play tennis?
Yep.
My, my opinion, I'd like to hear from others, please. Mr. Walsh?
This, this was brought forth by an applicant who may have a timeline, so...
The applicant is here this evening, Mr. Chair. The board would like to hear from him. They certainly could do that.
I think that was a hint?
Yes.
And I appreciate that.
This is not a public hearing.
I just have one clarification. So, is this discussion as in the agenda, or on this?
It is not a public hearing. That is an error.
Okay, we already talked about it.
That is an error, correct, yes. At the top, at the top of your, item five, it's a discussion.
All right.
Yes, my apologies for that. We did advertise this as a discussion, not as a public hearing.
Sure, sure. The agenda page was correct, the individual item is not. I'd like to just throw out, because we hear this word bypass often, when we see the word Gorham Bypass, that's the Bernard Ryan's bypass, not this other
Oh.
thing that's been discussed recently, or not discussed. Correct? It's Bernard Ryan's Highway.
Correct.
Yep, thank you. Sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, and good evening. Depending on the photo you have in front of you, I do want to make one point of clarification. Hopefully, you're seeing a color-coded image of just the parcel. You'll see in the center, around the center, you'll see a 22-7 and a 22-8. I only own, by the way, Gary Jordan, sorry, my apologies, Gary Jordan, Sunrise Lane, anyways. You'll see those two lots. 22.7 still exists, and that is owned by Kathleen, Kathy West. So, the lot proposed for the change is just the area adjacent to the, the roundabout itself. So, if you were to look at 22-8, the southern property line, and extend it horizontally, that would, that leaves 22-7 intact, and then a new lot is being created through the tax map lot system through the county. So, just want to make sure that that was clear, that the entire lot will not be changed. Kathy West does not have, yes, sir, that is the one. So, if you draw a horizontal line on the southern side of 22-8, right there, straight across, straight, left, right?
All the way across here?
Yes, ma'am. That lot's, that lot stays the same. It would be suburban residential. It's a single-family residence, which is half of the reason for the zoning debate in that region. There's a lot of single-family houses. That person owns a single-family house. They would like, I don't want to speak on behalf of Kathy West, that's hers, but she did not elect previously to rezone. So, to address the earlier question, yes, I would like to proceed forward if at all possible. I, I am not personally aware of anybody else in the region that is looking for. I do think that that would be an intriguing opportunity for the town to evaluate, but I'm not aware of anybody else in the region that is looking for this, and I...
I'm sorry, forgive me. Continue on.
Oh, okay. So, I'm not aware of anybody else, but I do have my own personal timelines that I would like to try to proceed forward and towards the intent of the property. Right now, the, the goal is definitely mixed use, not high, high intensity or high development of residential. Right now, it is limited to suburban residential, which limits me with this approximate size, assuming net acreage, best guesses, a maximum of three duplexes. And that is the only use that I could put in there today if it stays suburban residential. So, my options, as it is zoned, is just three duplexes. If, if the town, which I have spoken with the town council, obviously, if the town would like to see businesses put into that spot, which I kind of see as a core ideal, regardless of what happens with whatever road that shall not be named, that is still an ideal spot. Generically, there's a high-traffic area, high visibility. It's a great spot, which is why I would like to proceed forward with rezoning it for mixed use, which gives me a lot more opportunities for it.
And you mentioned, it is time-sensitive?
Uh, I would not like to delay unnecessarily. I don't, I don't believe that there's anybody in that region. I think they've already had a chance to, like, the default was the option to, I believe everybody in that area was already given that opportunity, and I, I am not aware of anybody that's actually interested.
We do have someone that's spoken to us at, who owns 524.
524, oh, okay, okay.
Which is right across the parcel.
Okay, sure.
So, we are aware of at least one person who is interested.
Would, would, would us proceeding this evening hurt that? In other words, you're trying to, let's do it all at one time?
It might be handy, but it would not hurt it. They would just come under separate requests.
Okay.
I was going to ask, is there any way to move this to a public hearing and ask for additional, see if there's additional folks that are interested in rezoning? Can't we do both?
You can do both. They would just come after...
They'd have to have another public hearing.
True. Yes.
Understood. Yeah, this is just a discussion, not a public hearing. So, a month? Would we get this on the March agenda? If we were going to have a public hearing?
If it was only for this one, yes. To reach out to other owners in this existing zoning district, that would probably take more than three weeks. So, we would need to have a little more time for that.
That would be April at least.
Yes.
Well, as we're trying to be proactive, and as I've been criticized that the planning board slows things down, I am okay with continuing this evening and then pursuing other actions at a later time as they come before us. They might come before us. I'd like to hear from others.
Moving along.
Consensus?
I'm fine with that, yes.
Is there any language in this that anyone sees or...
Not language, but I am confused about the lot, because it sounds like that 22-7, I didn't understand. It sounds like you're cutting it in half.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm so confused.
So, the simple way that the tax map lot system works is that if you buy it at a certain time of the year, and so, the previous owner, Kathy West of 22-7, she sold me, in this case, the northern side of this lot. The maps don't update within a certain period of time. I think you had to have purchased it prior to April 1. And then, once the next April 1 hits, they'll issue be a new tax map lot number. There'll be clear dividers and divisions. I will be, I'm going to make up a number 22-7-1 or something along those lines that makes it clear that the north side of this is a whole, separate, distinct lot. So, this has already been divided and sold, and so, there's two owners. Kathy West owns the southern portion. I own the northern portion.
Okay, so, we're still, we're, there's just a little bit of a catch-up with that, but it's not as big as this looks here, basically.
You've got the line spot on. That is the spot.
Okay, all right.
We really, we could ask Mr. Jordan, sorry, we could ask him to provide a boundary survey and update the map using that data set.
And we have those surveys already completed, so that is available.
Could I ask about access? So...
That's a good question.
Washburn Drive, and there's a black line drawn that indicates road.
Yes.
Is it the road where Washburn Drive ends and just barely touches the edge of your property? That's the access?
Yes, sir. So, depending on when you move to Gorham, when the Bernard Heinz bypass went in, Washburn Drive used to connect to South Street 114. When the roundabout got installed, they cut the road back, probably due to proximity and other access requirements. I won't presume, but that's my guess. And so, now that road dead-ends at a pseudo hammerhead ending. And so, that is the only non-controlled access, access point at this point in time. I have, in full disclosure, I am contacting the MDOT with regards to possibly trying to gain access off of South Street and/or the Bernard Heinz bypass, which is...
If you don't get that, is this adequate?
Gary Jordan's opinion from a developer standpoint or from a townsman's standpoint? I'll answer both if you don't mind. So, from a Gary Jordan standpoint, I say no. I say that's a terrible choice. I wouldn't want to do it. I don't want to do it. I think it's going to put a lot of traffic down Washburn Drive, as you would imagine. Anybody that's traveled down South Street, and it's right at the intersection of McClellan and it's Washburn, is the other side of that road. It's a terrible intersection at the bottom of, not quite the bottom of a hill, but it's at a cresting of a hill where there's already a backlog of traffic. I think it's a terrible spot. Full disclosure. When it comes to developing it, that's why I'm pursuing the control of access break, quite frankly. I, you know, I've seen some of the plans for the future development of that area. I think in the future, I think right-in, right-outs make a lot of sense in that area off of the main roads, but that is a decision that comes after. If I don't get it rezoned, I, this is literally, and this is why I say there is some time sensitivity, this is my step one. If the, if the town planning board and town council would like to see it stay as suburban residential, my hands are tied. It shall be and forever be. It'll be some residential housing. If we convert it to crossroads, that allows for mixed-use development, allows me to put in some businesses and some mixed-use in there, which would then drive those further conversations and allow me to then contact MDOT further. Their date, by the way, is 2027, before they'll consider a break, which, depending on the size and the complexity of the lot, actually isn't that far off. You know, 2026, I would have liked to have, you know, I would like to break around by 2026, complete by 2027. Would put me in a very good position. So, to answer your question, you know, Gary Jordan doesn't, you know, town resident, thinks it's a terrible choice. If MDOT and Traffic Studies and the town engineer and the town planning office all says, go down Washburn, I'll go down Washburn. I don't like it, but I'll go down Washburn. And I'm sure that road, and I did talk to somebody in, in one of the departments, I apologize, doesn't really matter. They said, you know, hey, it's already a town road. It's already built to standards. It's being underutilized. It's currently a town road servicing two houses. And you go, why wouldn't you use it? Well, we all know where that road dumps out. So, I've talked enough.
Okay. Thanks for your explanation.
No problem.
Any other questions, concerns? Might there be a motion out there for someone?
Yes, move to send the proposed zoning amendment regarding roads, am I reading the right one? Road standards, sorry.
Before you make an amendment, is the lot and map number correct? If it was split, he's saying he doesn't even know what the lot and map number are.
That's a good question.
Right, so our motion wouldn't be specific because there's no lot number for it yet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless we describe it and say the north portion of lot 22.7.
Yep, we can do that.
Yeah, owned by the applicant.
Right.
Yep, that would nail it.
Yep.
What, would you agree? What?
To, to say the north portion of this lot, as owned by the applicant.
Hey. And we're not changing the zoning. We're just approving the change of the zoning.
You're just sending it to public hearing. It needs to go to a public hearing.
Okay. Are we ready? All right. Move to send the proposed zoning map amendment to change the zoning of map 22 lot 7, north portion, as owned by the applicant, from suburban residential district to Southern Gorham's Crossroads District, to the next available planning board meeting for a public hearing.
Well said.
Second.
Colonel, thank you. We're on board. Is there any other discussion? So, we're going to have a public hearing? A month? Will this occur in March?
Yes, and the board...
No pressure. I'm just curious.
Yeah, just to clarify, the board does not want us to reach out to other owners? Or they do?
Not part of this amendment. It's not part of this.
Got to vote.
I just want to make sure the applicant can have the survey into us so we can map it correctly.
Absolutely.
You said it was already done.
It's already done.
Then, yes, that's a quick turnaround.
So, the caveat is if you don't get it in, you're not going to have a public hearing? Okay, simple.
Or it'd be very awkward for me. Yes, I get that.
Tomorrow morning, we open at 7:00.
Noted.
Unless there's a snowstorm, maybe. Motion by Mr. Walsh, second by Colonel Benson. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you. See you tomorrow morning at 7:00, right?
Yes, sir. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Be good.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, moving along. We've got 20 minutes. We changed Item 6 to Item 7 and Item 7 to Item 6. Item 6, 7, whichever. Discussion, sketch plan review, Hakazamana, 41 Burnham Road. A proposal to construct four additional residential units of affordable duplex housing with associated infrastructure located at 41 Burnham Road, Zone Resident, Suburban Residential, map 3, lot 16-1. The applicant is self-represented. Ask planning to open this up for us, please.
Hello, Mr. Chairman. This is the first time this has been before the planning board. This is, as you've heard, for sketch plan, the property is owned, suburban residential, and the future land use plan proposes that it remains so. So, this proposal, as is, is consistent with the comprehensive plan and current zoning. Just some quick highlights. It's not within Shoreland Zone. It is located within the pedestrian overlay zone, so pedestrian facilities will be accommodated for under that section of the ordinance. There's a request to specify the type of street that this will be so that we can determine what we want to, what we should be reviewing under, what section we need to review it under. A Class A soil survey is required for those projects that are not required, I'm sorry. A Class A soil survey is required for those projects not required to do net acreage calculation. So, they should be doing the Class A survey. And then, underground utilities are required throughout town for all projects. Those are the things that are not necessarily usual everywhere, so something to note for the applicant. And with that, I turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Airman. Sir?
Good evening. Thank you for hearing us this evening. My name is Rod McStarley. I work with Sebego Technics, and I'm here representing the applicant, DG Whitehouse, Inc. The property is at 41 Burnham Road. It's currently has a two-family residential dwelling on it. Our client wishes to create more affordable housing within the Gorham or this project. And so, we've looked at the site relative to providing additional housing. We did a analysis relative to the net residential area for this parcel. You'll see that there are wetlands on the parcel. There were de-ducks done for that and also the standard 15% on the roadways. With that, you come up to a allowable density of 2.65 units. Being an affordable or proposed affordable housing project, there is a multiplier per code of 2.5, which gets you up to six units for this property. And what we proposed here is to, two additional duplex units on the property. As far as the proposed access is for this project, we are proposing a condominium driveway, which would be built to the, I believe it's the standard for private way for six units or less, gravel-type access. On the plan that we have indicated, we indicated that access drive will be 16 feet wide. It does widen when we get adjacent to the two parking areas, so that we have required parking space depth of 18 feet plus a required backup area of 24 feet. We originally were looking at possibly seeing if the town were going to move forward relative to changing the code relative to allowing an aggregate subsurface system so that we could use one subsurface system for all three buildings. However, based upon the requirements for setback, that's probably not going to be the most favorable for this project. So, we have indicated each duplex would have its own subsurface area and individual well. We've shown on the map there the required separations that you would see for typical, for the size of the wet, the under, the septic system and the wells. We have not done any subsurface work yet. When we do that, we will probably adjust the areas of the septic field slightly. But the intent, once again, is to provide two additional duplex units on the property. Other comments relative to the review of it was relative to the number of parking spaces that we have provided. We have basically provided two spaces for each unit. Code requires much less than that. And one of the things would be a justification for why we're proposing more. This area does not have any mass transit in it, in the location, and what you're going to typically see even on affordable housing is probably more than one vehicle per resident in many cases. So, we wouldn't want to under-provide for parking and then burden the access route coming in relative to that. We did see a comment there relative to turnaround for a fire truck. That's reasonable. We would incorporate that as we move forward on the project in order to provide adequate turnaround for emergency vehicles that come into the site if necessary. Relative to the underground utilities, we would probably need a little clarification on that, because we do have overhead that comes in to the property right now. What we would propose is to, you know, drop on those poles and go to the units that we have. We don't know if it was the intent for us to redo that existing pole line that's into the development as it is. Once again, this is going to be affordable housing project, and we are going to try to keep costs down as much as possible. Relative to sidewalk, being in the sidewalk overlay district, we need to understand that a little bit better. We'll talk to staff about that and do what we need to do if we have a concern about that relative to the affordability. We'll have to address that with staff and the planning board later. But what we would really like is some feedback from the planning board, whether they see this as a project that is a good project relative to for, providing affordable housing, and more than willing to be receptive to any comments that you have. And I appreciate your time on that.
Thank you. Members of the board? Colonel, please.
Yep. So, you mentioned that the septic and well sites are preliminary. Any concern? There's a residence to the north that's pretty close. So, is there any concern with their septic or well and the impact to your plans?
Preliminary, I'll say there's no concern. There's the one house you can see to the side of the plan. We've got a rough area where that well is. It looks like we meet the separation distance on that. Doesn't appear that there's any septic... Doesn't appear that there's any septic that are close to the rear. You'll note that our well is in the back of our site, because that's what would be impacted. And relative to more southwesterly, there's really nothing there. The house is, is set back quite a bit, and their septic system would be back quite a ways, so. We don't think there'll be any concern relative to off-site systems. It's really, you know, once we do the test pits for our site, figuring out where we can put the two new systems and making sure we have the adequate setback on the wells that we have to put in.
Mr. Walsh?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, just a couple of questions. What, what makes this affordable housing?
It will be the, the rate that they're allowed to charge relative to the sale of the property, and with that, there would be a time delineation of how long that, that residence can, has to stay within that money framework or whatnot. I think it's 20-year term typically. So, affordability, you're looking at 75% of AMI, the average medium income, and below is considered affordable. From 75, 80 to 120, that's workforce housing.
Okay, I think I remember when we went over those tables. Okay, thank you, and so just a little feedback, well, actually, one question first. I know this is just a kind of a sketch plan at this point, but what is the front face of each unit?
Excuse me?
What, can you point to where the front face of each unit would be?
Okay, the, the, the one on the northerly side faces basically the drive. That's what the intent is. And the other one would have a walkway along the front, which would be facing the wetland.
Yeah, right. So, the one that's, Unit 5 and 6 is quite close to the driveway?
Yep.
And that, that will be the front face?
Yep.
So, you're really tight, and is there a reason why it's so tight on the driveway?
No, preliminary design.
Okay, just seems like there's almost no room there.
Yeah.
And then, I guess you, you would say you're looking for feedback. I understand you are providing two spaces for each unit, which I think is the right call, but to how would, how would visitor parking be handled?
We're hoping that that would be enough when you consider the rate for the affordable housing, that you wouldn't have everybody that needs to hit that, so that the extra space or two we would have would be adequate.
So, if someone, well, I mean, so, what you're saying, no Super Bowl parties, huh? So, if I park along the driveway, can a car get by?
16 feet wide if you pull over the edge.
Yeah, okay, you're all, you're all set there?
Yep.
Okay, that's all I have.
So, each of those spaces for parking, where it says 20 by 40, are those two parking spaces or four?
Four.
Okay.
There are four, and once again, they're planned to be 18 feet deep, and you'll notice that the driveway has been widened in that area, so they have a 24-foot backup.
Is that 18 feet from, from where? Where, where are you measuring 18 feet?
18 feet would be the far edge of the gravel access, you'd have 24 feet. That would be the backup space, and then from that to the end of the space would be 18 feet.
Oh, okay.
So, 42 total.
I asked, I asked because my pickup truck is 22 feet long.
What's that?
My pickup truck alone is 22 feet long.
Is it?
Anyone else? Any other questions, any other comments? This was a pre-application discussion. We feel encouraged?
Yep, yep, and look forward to seeing the, more detail in the future.
Any planning, Bob, any questions, comments?
The only thing is the, the parking, we, we put that in there, the, the zoning ordinance actually calls for a parking maximum for affordable housing, but the state law says that that's the minimum requirement, so the town went above and beyond with the implementation of LD 2003 with regard to the parking. So, the planning board could, it, could issue a waiver if it determined that the applicant had sufficiently shown that more parking was required. They would need to get a waiver.
When would you like that waiver discussed? Sooner, sooner the better?
Well, I mean, Carol, what do you think?
It's up, it's up to you, if you feel you can verbalize that, well.
It's not going to be detrimental if we wait?
It will not.
Won't hurt anything.
We have a, we actually have a form they fill out and put the exact wording they would like, and the exact section they would like a waiver from.
You could handle that at preliminary. If, if, if you think your overwhelming consensus is this is a doable project and it's something that you would entertain and whatnot, then I think you could handle a waiver at preliminary.
Speaking of myself and what I've seen, it looks good, but...
I understand, you're not giving approval.
Colonel?
Is there any requirement for an internal sidewalk here because of the multi-unit condominium driveway? We talked about external sidewalk, but is there an internal sidewalk requirement?
It is the pedestrian overlay zone, so it does require both, but we'll look for, we'll look for some opportunity here, realizing that this is affordable housing project. We'll see what the wording says to maybe allow a waiver or...
Yeah, because it wasn't discussed at all as far as internal, so I...
Yeah, we would probably look to see a waiver because you really, they're going to be independent units, it's not like a community where you're going to be, I think, going from unit to unit.
We'll have to talk about it.
Yeah, HOA, is there an HOA requirement?
There'll be an HOA requirement because there'll be maintenance considerations.
It's not a waiver. You either do this or do that, so there's no waiver, so we'll...
Yeah, so that's going to have to be addressed, I think, is to have a discussion about that.
Okay.
Consensus, we feel decent with a couple of things that we need to have the developer talk about? Going once? I'm not going to go twice. Thank you.
Thank you for hearing me this evening.
Thanks for waiting.
Thanks for waiting.
Members of the board, it's like two minutes at 10. I, I don't have, you know, I, I'm, do we want to discuss item?
We can finish it up, I think.
Okay, Mr. Burrows, you gave me some incentive.
The last item appears to be just a housekeeping item.
If you see my head drop. All right, if we're okay with Mr. Dyke, we're okay to continue. Okay, thank you, we're going to be going past 10. Item 6, which is now Item 7. It's a discussion, Land Use and Development Code Amendment. Amend road standards, proposed amendments to the Land Use and Development Code for technical updates to Chapter 2, Section 2-5, Minimum Standards for the Design and Construction of Streets and Ways. I look to Planning to open this up for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Town staff have been asked to review the road standards. Review includes both design standards and the application of waivers. Revisions are primarily technical in nature and don't represent a major substantive change. This is the first time that the planning board is seeing this, and I would open this up for discussion rather than go line by line unless that's requested by the planning board.
Thank you. So, I do see on Table 1, it was amended a year ago, May 7th. But this is the existing document, and we're redlining?
Correct.
To delete?
Yep, so the, the majority of these changes are removing the private ways out of this, this public streets table. The private ways exists in a separate table in the Land Use Development Code, so it's repetitive, so we're removing that, or we're proposing to remove that. There's also some additional code that is, is, conflicts with some of this information. We have a access management standard now in the Land Use Development Code, so some of the distances between intersections conflict with that, so we're moving, removing that from this table, and then also removing the references to private, private ways, again, that we're proposing to remove. The one major change here is increasing the upper limit of the ADT, the Average Daily Traffic, on urban access and rural access roadways. We felt that that arbitrarily kicked some design standards up to a sub-collector or rural or urban sub-collector design standard arbitrarily on what otherwise could be lower classification streets.
So, those numbers across from the average daily traffic are 0 to 1,000 cars or vehicles?
Yep, ADT, which is average daily traffic.
Okay, so it is number of vehicles?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, average, right, 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 thank you. Colonel, please.
Mr. Chair, seeing that this is mostly technical and it is going to go to a, a public hearing, we would have additional time to review it if we needed to, and so I recommend that we, we move forward.
Yeah, I'd go along with that, and, and basically, the updated version of this is going to just eliminate the private ways columns, and anything that's in red is going to disappear except...
1,000.
Yeah, urban access and rural access under ADT.
Would I be correct in that sidewalks are addressed somewhere else? That's why you're taking it out of this as well?
That's correct.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion.
Go, Colonel, go.
Move to send the proposed zoning amendment regarding road standards to the next available planning board meeting for a public hearing.
Second, Dave Walsh.
Walsh, I thought, I thought Mr. Burrows was...
He beat me to it.
So, so, Mr. Walsh. For a public hearing, next, next available meeting. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you to Ben Dyke, thank you to the Planning Department, thank you all for your patience dealing with me and missing public hearing shut-ups and things like that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, move to adjourn.
I can't out, quick enough.
I'll second it.
Delaney?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Have a good evening. Thank you all, thank you, thank you, thank you.